All right, the hour of seven having arrived. The City of Urbana Council's Committee of the Whole Meeting will come to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, are there any staff reports? Wow, we're two for two. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Dennis and seconded by Carol, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the minutes are approved. Public input. Let's start with the least controversial thing on the agenda. I dot traffic stops. We have... Marcia Woodbury, please. Oh, I apologize, I see, okay. In support of the traffic study. Esther Pat wishes to address the committee before the agenda items are presented, so. Esther?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Esther Pat, 706 South Kohler Avenue. It was, I think, 11 years ago when the Urban Human Relations Commission first asked for the police to be tracking the race of people they stopped in traffic stops. Of course, they would have that information for the people they ticket, but the ones that they don't ticket. It was response to the concerns about people being targeted because of their race. This was before the state law passed requiring that the data be collected. But it's now been close to 10 years the data's been coming in, and I know, I've seen the state data for about the last six years. And there is definitely a recurring pattern of people who are not white getting more traffic tickets, people who are not white more likely to be asked to consent to a search when there's no probable cause, despite the fact that every single year, the number of searches that turn up anything is a much higher percent among the white drivers who are asked to consent than the non-white. And now we're seeing also with the drug sniffing dogs where they're separate from the issue that it seems they're wrong a lot, because one out of, only one out of four times that the dog indicates a search is needed is something found when the driver's Caucasian, and it's only one out of eight times when the driver's African-American. Anyway, the point is, you know, this issue keeps coming up, and the answer for years that we got about any discrepancy is always, "Well, the police get more calls for service where there are African-American people, and that's why everything else just shows a disproportionate number of African-American people." And I think it's probably more complex than that. And I would encourage you, I know you have a lot to do, and that's one of the problems with getting focused on this, and I know that the police chief is looking at this somewhat, but the reason that the ACLU and Legal Women Voters and NAACP and CU Citizens for Peace and Justice have all come together to ask you to appoint a citizen task force to look into this is so that the subject really will be studied, and hopefully we can find out more information and come up with some direction for what can be done to improve the situation so that people of color do not feel like they are targets of the police simply because of their race. And I, and I think this is something that could be positive, that you just, if every time we bring this up, it comes down to, "Oh, you're picking on the police, don't do that." And you all feel, "Oh, you better not support anything the public wants, because it'll be like picking on the police." No one's picking on the police. People are trying to help solve a problem, and there are a lot of people in the community who are interested in helping you solve this problem, so I hope that you will take up the suggestion and appoint a citizen task force for the specific purpose of reviewing this topic. Thank you very much.
Bishop King James Underwood and Dr. Evelyn Underwood do not choose to address the committee, but ask that their position be entered to the record as follows. We are still concerned about the Dr. Ellis Drive subdivision sewer problem. The remainder of the public input cards wish, the folks who filled them out wish to be heard at the time the agenda item is presented. Is there anyone else who wishes to fill out a card and speak?
At the time of the issue, yeah, at the time.
Okay, very good. We'll call you at the time of the issue. Okay, agenda item number six is a presentation regarding Champagne County Greenways and Trails Plan. I'm sorry, I skipped one. Agenda item number five, nobody's here for this, but discussion of I dot traffic stops.
Good afternoon. I guess I should have asked exactly how to find the presentation. All right, well, I apologize for the delay, I'm not exactly sure. Yeah. I'm sorry, Jason, I can't find it. Oh, I thought I got an email saying that it was all loaded up and ready to go. Oh.
You sent that to me?
No.
You sent that to me?
I got it today. Okay, well, we'll just do it without, we'll do it without the PowerPoint if that's okay. Does everyone have the PowerPoint in front of them? I'm not exactly sure how it didn't get sent out. All right, well, I've just been asked to provide a very brief overview and update of the I dot traffic stop report and information. As general background, under 625 ILCS, 511 212, 2003, every law enforcement agency in Illinois was required to collect data relative to traffic stops within their jurisdiction. Data collection began in January 2004. That data collection provides or collects the driver's name, address, birth date, gender, race, as determined by the officer, the traffic violation alleged, reason for stop, whether or not it's an equipment moving violation, license or registration violation, date, time of stop, location, length of stop, vehicle make and year. And whether or not, they also record whether or not a consent search is performed, and whether or not there is any type of illegal substance that's found. Now, an amendment is that in 2012, they also started collecting data regarding dog sniffs, basically dog-related searches that I believe was mentioned a little earlier, and also stop disposition. So, a very quick overview of the methodology for anyone who's not initiated into it. A benchmarking system was developed to determine, or to, yeah, determine whether minority drivers are being stopped more often than Caucasian drivers. It required an accurate estimate of driver demographics, i.e. the percentage of minority drivers that's expected. It's basically the gold standard in determining the percentage of minority drivers in any particular population is the observation method. It's incredibly expensive and very difficult and unwieldy. Actually, in a conversation with Dr. Weiss, he told us that in the various instances where this was tried, again, it was very expensive, but it was also very error-prone because the individuals who were participating in the experiments had difficulty identifying accurately the race of the drivers that they were seeing. And so, that notion was abandoned. There were other types of methodology that were abandoned, and eventually, the study designers opted for using adjusted census data. And basically, there aren't many adjustments made to it. The data is taken from whatever the most recent census is, and what they do is they subdivide the data, or the categories, to make sure that they align with the census data, and try to line those up. And also, they cut out anyone who's under the age of 15. So, it's only 15 and above. Basically, those are the adjustments that are made to the census data. There's not a whole lot else going on there. Obviously, that type of approach infers a strong similarity between the residential population, as reflected in the census, and the driving population. It allows the study to be very definitive in many ways, and inexpensively determine benchmarkings for various localities. Now, there was also an exception made up north near Cook County, because there's so much driving and transigence for individuals who are driving between counties and between cities. I think for those cities, they use another adjustment which takes into account the radius, like a 30-mile radius around a potential city or county, and then they use that and they incorporate that into the minority driving statistic. Here, it's my understanding that they do not do that. So, if you look at our general population, our general minority population, and the actual statistic that's used as the estimated minority driving population, they're very, very similar. I want to make sure I hit all the points. Alignment between the adjusted population estimate and the percentage of minority stops would result in a score of one. Such a score would mean that a minority's driver's probability of being stopped is no greater than a Caucasian's. So, as the score goes up, a 1.1 basically is that a minority driver would have a 10% greater chance of being stopped than a typical Caucasian driver, and on and on. Again, just to explain a little further, the estimated minority driving population statistic functions as the denominator in the equation that determines the yearly disparity ratio. Based upon the 2010 census results, the estimated minority driving population for Urbana was adjusted from 30.62%, which it was in 2000, to 39.5%. So, it's, there's been quite an adjustment. That adjustment had a sizable impact on Urbana's underlying disparity ratio. As you can see, in 2010, I've provided you information on the statewide data so that you can kind of compare it to what's going on in Urbana. Using the old, or the census data from 2000, for the years 2010 and 2011, Urbana's statistic was 1.735. In 2010, 2011, 1.578. And then in 2012, 1.068, or 1.07. The next slide basically shows how the rate, the rates under the reported figures basically have compared with the state rates over time, over the last three years. And obviously, in graph form. Then finally, on the last page that you have, what I did was I took the ratio, the 39.5% ratio, and adjusted it back to 2010. So, the 39.5 is based upon data collection, the snapshot that occurred in the census in 2010. So, if you assume that that actually was the data in 2010, and apply it to 2010's totals, just as a, just as an exercise in trying to compare apples to apples, you end up with a disparity ratio in 2010 of 1.345, in 2011 of 1.223, and obviously, in 2012 of 1.068. One of the reasons I did this is because if you notice in the unadjusted data, or the, in the ratios before you make that adjustment, there's a huge difference between 2011 and 2012. And so, this smoothes out that difference somewhat. You can sort of argue as to, or discuss or debate whether or not that's a relevant statistic. I think it probably is since the data was collected in 2010. From that point going forward, it would seem that that would be the most relevant statistic. I'm not exactly sure why they waited until 2012 to apply it, but certainly, that's the information that I have. So, looking at this, at least for the three years that we're looking at here, particularly based upon the new population data, it looks as if there's somewhat of a declining rate of, well, of the disparity. That could be due to a number of reasons that, you know, I don't think anyone at this point is prepared to say. It could be just random noise. It could be that there is some type of decrease. It's not clear from the information that we have. We would have to drill down and do a lot more analysis to determine what some of the causes might be.
Any questions from the committee? Eric?
So, one question is, do you have any view on the, is there anything to be gleaned about the remarkably low rate of traffic stops for people of Asian descent?
Well, I'm not sure. To be honest with you, I don't know. We would have to look at, one of the things that I think would probably tell a lot is, if you looked at the GEO codes of where the stops were occurring, and looked at the particularly, in particular neighborhoods, at the population, and compared sort of the population demographics in those individual GEO codes, if you see a high percentage of stops there, and you see one population that's much higher than the rest, then that's going to explain some of the variance. What, you know, it's difficult to say, particularly in regards to the Asian population, and to be honest with you, I didn't spend a lot of time thinking about that even when we did the study back in 2009, because it wasn't really a large area of concern. But certainly, that's something we can look at.
So, the other question that I have, if I may, one more. What is the current relationship of the discrepancy during daylight hours and during dark, dark, dark time hours?
Right. That's something else that we could drill down and look at. I know, I looked at it in 2010, and, and the reason I looked at it was based upon a write-up that was done by the Rand, by a Rand research group. And what they found was, is that, or at least the hypothesis is that it's much more difficult to determine the race of a driver after dark than it is in the daylight hours. And what they found was, is that they found the main disparities occurring after dark in those times where it's more difficult to see, or at least under their hypothesis, you can debate this. They found that the majority of the disparity was occurring after dark when it's more difficult to see the driver. Now, and when I actually ran the numbers a couple of years ago, I found generally the same thing. So, I'm sure that that might be helpful, too, in this particular instance, depending on how you feel about that, the underlying assumption.
Yeah, I did some reading in other literature, you know, other than what was given to us about, you know, about the research into this area, and that seems to be a thing that people do worry about. You know, in terms of the validity of the conclusions, they worry a lot about the distinction between after dark and during daytime hours.
Madam Mayor?
So, it looked as if Urbana was a lot higher than the state average when you use the, when the state was using the 2000 census for 2010. But when you use the 2010 census, where we are right now in 2012 is actually below the state number, which is an interesting development. The state is 1.197, and the state grew from 1.121 in 2010 to 1.197, and Urbana dropped from 1.345 in 2010 to 1.068. So, right now, it's below the state, and it also has a downward trend in either one of these charts, whether you're using the 2000 population or the 2010 population. But I think part of the problem that we discovered when we went through this in great detail a couple of years ago is that we're dealing with very small numbers, and when you look at a whole state, you have much bigger samples than you would in a small city like Urbana. So, that's part of the problem. But it doesn't look, I mean, what, what do you, people are asking us to have a study of this, and now we're below the state average. So, we're practically at one, it's 1.068.
Diane?
With regard to GEO codes, and as I was thinking about that, there are areas in town where we've concentrated police activity, police patrols for various reasons, whether it's in response to crime, or response to residents' requests, or calls for service. So, have, 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 do we have the information on where these stops are taking place in terms of the GEO codes, and if there's any relationship between, you know, basically numbers of police officers on the street in a given location, calls for service, crime reports, et cetera? I mean, what's, what's the connection among all that?
So, we have the raw data, we haven't sorted it to sort of make those determinations. We did that in 2009, and we did see that there were very high concentrations in areas with high concentrations of particular minority groups, and so...
High, high traffic stops?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there were, so in that particular area, you would find a very high rate of disparity. Now, because it was a GEO code, it was, you know, you ultimately averaged it out against all the other GEO codes and the activity that was going on there, but certainly, yeah. In some areas of the city, you know, upwards of 80 to 90% of the stops were of African-American drivers, because those neighborhoods are typically thought to be African-American neighborhoods, or at least neighborhoods where African-Americans are highly represented in the population there. So, that happens, yes. We haven't drilled down, again, to find out what the numbers look like from this year, but in 2009, we found out to be very present. Now, what we didn't find was that there was necessarily any type of connection between the calls for service and the, and the amount of traffic stops that were occurring in each GEO code.
Bill?
Yeah, I think in, in looking at the estimated minority driving population, did you try breaking out the estimated black population versus Asian population, and recalculate the ratio based on that? Because the low stop rate for the Asians is included in that estimated minority driving population, and would cancel out anything that would be higher in the black population. And I think, I think if you think about it, the Asian population is probably 50% on campus, and most of those people don't drive as much. A lot of them don't own cars, so that's probably why, you know, the stop rate for Asians is less, because the minority driving population doesn't really reflect the minority driving miles. And conversely, maybe some neighborhoods where there's African-Americans living that have families with kids in school, there's, you know, more driving. So, just, I mean, that's part of the problem that you talked about in determining who actually drives, as far as it's not the same as who lives there. But I think if you break out that ratio, you would still see a pretty high ratio for African-American drivers. And I think that's the one we're probably most concerned about, so it would be helpful, I think, each year to look at the African-American ratio by itself.
Okay, Carol, then Dennis.
I did want to just clarify for, for me and the public, I guess. In layman's terms, as you apply the census data to your ratio, which gave you a lower number, is it your thought that there is no disparity based on this, or the decrease in disparity? How do you explain the change in the number?
I guess I would look at it as more of a measurement, a question of how accurate is the measurement to begin with. And so, if the census data, which is a pretty, I don't want to say it's an arbitrary thing, but it seems like it was applied arbitrarily in terms of when they applied it, or when they changed it in 2012, as opposed to changing it in 2010. If that could have such a large impact on the disparity ratio, I guess for me, in my mind, it calls into question the underlying methodology anyway. And so, I don't have a high degree of confidence that the study either way reflects, you know, actual reality.
The actual reality.
The actual reality. But I think it would be difficult to get to, it would be pretty expensive to get to, and this is the best that the state can do at this point.
And then, just, I think Diane was about to ask a question that I was thinking. In another practice that we did, we did the mapping for the county jail situation as we developed it. And in the stops here, we, it's not a terrible number of people, well, we could not map this to see geographically where the stops are taking place. Have we, the method to do that, so that we can visually see on a map where these are, the high concentrations are?
Yeah, I think, well, I could certainly break them down by GEO codes with the raw data. I'm, I don't have the mapping software to actually put them on a map, but I could show you the GEO codes.
Okay.
With the data.
I think that's something that I would certainly like to see. I don't want to, I don't want to infer that in some way arbitrarily, Urbana is worse than anywhere else, and I don't want to do the opposite, as ignore the numbers as they are presented and explain them away. I know that there's a very difficult task to drill down truly how the disparity takes place. Is it part of training? Is it part of overpolicing? Is it, what is it actually the result of? Unfortunately, you're not the one we actually should be asking these questions to, because you don't work for the police department. And I think that we need to expand the conversation to include the chief, so that we can actually ask the question to the people who actually do this job. And that would be the, I think, the appropriate way to do that. And then, secondly, to study something does not suggest that there's inherently something wrong, except that there may be something that we've overlooked and we've not tried. And so, I would not suggest that we take that position either, that, "Well, it's not as bad as it used to be, so therefore, we've done something differently." It does require that we take the actual numbers, and look at the numbers, and say, "How can we address these, or how do we explain them," but not necessarily explain them away. So, I won't, I'll save my comments for the afterwards, because I know it's not for you, Todd, but I appreciate you doing the work.
Dennis?
Yeah, since the, since the data is now being referenced to... Yeah, since the, since the data is now being referenced to local populations, and we're using information based on the census data, and I'm assuming it has to do with, you know, localities within Urbana, and we're talking about, you know, whether it's possible to GEO code the location of the stops, but it seems like there would have to be an effort to find out whether those stopped actually live in the neighborhood. We have plenty of opportunities for people to come and go into the neighborhoods from other parts of the community. And I know that as far as foot traffic goes, there are some parts of my ward which often, very often, have individuals walking through the neighborhood that live elsewhere, even in other communities completely. So there needs to be a way of filtering through that aspect of the data as well, because it might not be really the people who are living in a neighborhood who are committing a lot of the traffic issues that might be occurring. And it would be nice to know, even though they're occurring on the certain blocks or in certain intersections, whether these are indeed people who are related in any way to the local neighborhood.
Well, if the, I guess the inquiry there, we actually did that also in 2009, and found that less than, some part, less than 50 percent of the traffic stops actually were of Urbana residents, or right around 50 percent were of Urbana residents. Many of the rest were Champaign residents, and then the remaining ones, for the most part, were from the surrounding communities and from some of the outlying areas of Chicago. So, yeah, you can do that also when you're doing the-
Well, that's a very significant change in the information as far as Urbana goes, except for perhaps maybe the ultimate fact that there was a stop because there was an infraction.
Well, if that's the case, then it changes the numbers you use in these ratios completely, right?
Well, no, because we're using the numbers from the state, and we're using the state methodology when we're providing the ratio. So I, I mean, I don't want to stray too far away from that, but we were, we were interested in 2009 in how many of these drivers are actually from Urbana. And it was right around 50 percent with, if I recall, it's been three years, but about 30, a little bit more, over 30 percent of them being from Champaign, and then the remainder being from outlying communities.
But if we're using the estimated, EMDP, based on estimated driving population, that, that reflects the Urbana census population, correct?
That's one of the-
But you're saying the stops are, half of them don't live in Urbana, so they're not-
That's one of the drawbacks of the-
Well, that's a major drawback.
-of using that methodology of measurement.
That's a huge drawback.
Todd, could you, could you get me, sometime in the near future, the actual breakdown of the numbers by race and by category for both Urbana, Champaign, and maybe the county? Is there a county number?
Yes, there is a county number. I don't know the county number, and actually, I didn't pull out the Champaign number. I just compared it to the statewide, but yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, and they are broken down by actual, it's not just a single number for all minorities pooled together, is it?
No, that, if you look at the key indicators, they've actually, in many of the key categories, the state has broken it down into each minority group.
Yeah, yeah, but, no, but do we have the, the census data, the adjusted census data that would let us, okay, so I'm thinking in terms of statistical analysis. I want to take the expect, the actual numbers, calculate the expected value for different racial components based on the numbers that are, that the state claims are the driving population by race.
Yeah, I think that should be doable.
Okay. And then if we have Champaign and Urbana and the county, maybe there's some way to create something that is more reflective of the actual driving population that we're seeing. You know, because if it's 50 percent from Champaign and 50 percent from Urbana, you can, you can generate a better number, and that sort of thing.
And on weekends, that would be even different, because a lot of people come into the university and party on weekends and do various other things. So I, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I've been looking at this for a number of years, too, and you can get these CDs with all the data on it from the state. You can get a CD for each year with every traffic stop in the state, listed by make and model of car, what year the car is, how old the driver was, the race, sex, all that. It doesn't tell you the driver's home address, so you can't really tell whether they were stopped in their neighborhood. But you can get a lot of that information out of there, you can get the census data, and you can put it all together. But I think in the end, the estimate, the ratio we get, you really can't compare to other localities, because the driving demographics, even though the resident demographics are the same, the driving demographics are different. Depends on where people work, how much they drive. You know, Urbana has a really high walking and biking population, a lot of people that take MTD. And so all that is different from community to community. So I think what's useful with the race, ratio, is to do what you were doing, is compare it year to year, to see how it changes year to year. And then to drill down and look at it by race, and I just, I know they used to list the estimated driving population by race, and they aren't doing that this year. But just looking at this, a little less than a third of the stops were African-American, but we know in Urbana, I think it's about 17, 18 percent. In the census data, if you use the school data, it's closer to a third, because there's a lot of, a lot more kids, and that goes outside Urbana's boundaries. So it's, it's probably more than one, but it's probably less than two. You know, you get an idea, but you could calculate, you could calculate it, and you could track it over time. But it would be hard to compare it to other communities, I think. So without getting too far into discussion, I just wanted to put that out there, so that we wouldn't focus just on the ratio, because I think there's other things to look at. And you can map things, I've mapped some things. This is number of dog sniffs, and I've mapped, I've mapped things in the past. So it's all possible to do, but it's really hard to get to, get a complete understanding of the disparity. And I think you can, you can pick away at it by saying, yes, African-Americans tend to have poorer economics, so they drive older cars, so they get stopped more for equipment violations. In fact, I think 15 percent of the African-American stops were, it was 15 percent higher than Caucasian stops for equipment and license violations. I think it was something like 45 percent versus 30 percent. So right there, that's 15 percent of minority stops that are because of probably economics. You can drill down farther into citations. If you get stopped twice, is that when you get a citation? Do you get a warning first? And then if you don't fix it, you get a citation? That could be related to economics. If you can't afford to fix your car, you go longer without it getting fixed, things like that. And so there's ways to pick away at it, but you never can account for all of it. So there's probably something there that exists, and I think we need to look at how to address that. So I'd just rather we didn't get too focused on the, on the ratio itself.
Eric.
Todd, do, is this an issue that comes up frequently, or at all, in individual cases at the Human Relations Commission? Do people come complaining that they had been stopped inappropriately?
That, typically, those types of complaints would be made to the Civilian Police Review Board. And there are occasional complaints of that, and they have sort of different types of dispositions and outcomes. But that, yes, but it, but it occurs through the CPRB. And to my recollection, or to my recollection, like, the one I'm thinking of ultimately got withdrawn, actually, maybe a couple of them I've seen withdrawn, just for various reasons. And I, it, you know, we could take a look at that, but there's not a lot, there's not a lot of data to draw in there, because they're pretty few and far between.
Yeah, but that would, I guess that was the next question I asked. That that's a very small number compared to the numbers we're talking about, okay.
And each one has sort of their own story, so it's difficult.
Any further questions or comments? Okay.
I did want to apologize for not having the presentation. I set the, a presentation for my HRC meeting tomorrow, and that's in the one for today. So I wanted to apologize for Jason, because I just didn't send it to him, so.
Thank you, Todd.
Thanks.
Okay, we have several public input cards for this topic. First is Erin Ammons, wishing to address at the time, no position stated.
So I'm a visual learner, so it really would have helped to have the, the stuff up there to see. But I guess I'm trying to understand, and maybe if, maybe we all should take a deep breath, right? But because, as Ms. Esther Pat alluded to earlier, said very clearly, that this is not, though it may be, this, received this way, it's not an attempt to attack the police, the city of Urbana, the mayor, or anybody else. I think many of you are well aware of a campaign that many of the people in this room tonight have been working on for the past 18 months, and has resulted in some very positive things happening in the county board. And all we want to do is to participate here in the same way that we've participated in other places. That will be helpful for everybody in the long run. So today, I had a class in which I was, I learned some things about walking a mile in somebody else's moccasins. Now, African-American men in particular, I happen to be one, if you can't tell, continue to say that this is an issue repeatedly. Yet, we hear over and over and over again, some reason, some way to say that, well, maybe it's this, and maybe it's that, right? As opposed to simply saying, why don't we look at it from the perspective of our citizens who are coming and repeatedly saying that this is an issue for us in our community? African-American males just recently had another situation along the same lines. And operate from that perspective. So when I say walk a mile or drive a mile in our shoes, maybe then we'll spend more time and energy actually trying to hear and address that concern, as opposed to taking a defensive posture, so that we don't feel guilty or shameful of what's taking place. Okay? There was a very direct question asked by this lovely lady, Ms. Carol Ammons, about what measures were taken to bring these numbers down. But because we unfairly, Madam Mayor, have the wrong person sitting here trying to explain this information, he couldn't answer that question. The chief is dying to come and sit in this chair to answer those questions. Chief, come on up here, sit with me if you will. That is who we want to sit and answer some of these direct questions. We would love for him to be a part of a task force of individuals who would study this information. If you just listen intently to the various different positions, perspectives, we don't have a clear, concise feeling about this. Just because Todd offers some numbers that look very good, there'll be other numbers that might not look so good. And frankly, I think people want to have an opportunity to look at the information and discuss it as a community, and come to a particular conclusion about it. So my position is certainly clear. We do, I do want to have a study session, or to have a task force of community members, as well as police officials, council members, to actually look at this information and come up with something that we all know, we all feel good about. Now, I continue to say, as I said years ago, I believe that the police department has been put in-
You have one minute, Mr. Ammons.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Have been put in a very unfair position in a lot of ways, because the pressure from the larger society, from some of y'all's good friends, Mr. Ronald Reagan, back in that time, to have an amped-up and vigorous drug war, that everyone over the country now is realizing is a dismal failure. It is incarcerating folks like crazy, saddling people with felonies, destroying families, all so that we can maintain a few jobs. But it's not, there's no shortage of drugs on the streets. All that stuff is still the same, and our prison population is booming. The racial profiling, and I know that's, people don't like to use that term, but what we're discussing here tonight is a direct result of that. So if we release and take that pressure off our police department to not be so, does that mean I have to stop? To be continued.
Durrell Cruz, no position stated.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Personally, I think the public, the council has to allow the public the ability to speak as long as it allows staff to speak. After listening to what Mr. Rent said, there's a lot of information that needs to be brought forward. I'm going to try to just highlight a couple of things, and I think it's important that we, we consider what has gone on the last nine years. The Urbana Police Department has reported traffic stop dated to the state of Illinois for nine years. From this data, it is clear and consistent documentation that local traffic laws have never been uniformly or equitably enforced for African-American drivers. And I'm not going to use the word minority, because I'm not talking about Asians and Hispanics. I'm talking about African-American drivers solely. And we need to separate that out immediately in this discussion. Racial disparities can be seen throughout the data, year after year after year. Using a police term to establish a more contextual understanding of the situation, the totality of circumstances, let's collectively look at the nine-year summary of the four major components of the traffic stop data: stops, citations, consent searches, and dog sniffs. Keep in mind, African-American drivers make up 14 to 16. You can set the percent, it really doesn't matter, because the disparity is still there. But let's say it's 14 to 16 percent, which is relatively acceptable. During this period, African-American drivers, and it doesn't matter what neighborhood, it doesn't matter what town they come from, it doesn't matter, that doesn't matter, when African-Americans drive in Urbana, here's what happens. Thirty-four percent of all the stops are African-American. Fifty percent of the consent searches are African-American. Fifty-five percent of the dog sniffs reported are African-American. And African-Americans are ticketed 3 percent higher than Caucasian drivers. The past nine years, African drivers have been pleased differently than any other racial driving group in Urbana. No other minority group, Asians or Hispanics, show disparities of this magnitude. Folks, 16 percent of our community has been and continues to be subject to traffic law enforcement practices that create these racial disparities. The effect within that community must be profound in many ways. Despite years of clearly seeing what is going on, we have failed to take the appropriate steps to understand why, and the necessary actions to stop it. I have never believed this is solely a police department problem. It is larger than that. It is a community problem, and more pointedly, a white person's problem. Nine years of traffic data confirms this is not new. It didn't start just in 2003. More likely, it is a historical problem that has existed for decades. It doesn't matter who the police chief is, who the beat sergeant is, or who the patrol officer is. The racial disparities continued, because the practices and beliefs that enable them have become culturally ingrained in our community and the police department psyche as normal and acceptable. They were never questioned or challenged, because we either didn't have the will- They were never questioned or challenged because we either didn't have the will or the ability to see or act
You have one minute, Mr. Cruz.
even though the evidence was right in front of our eyes. There is a term for this: white privilege. It's similar to the concept of male privilege. White privilege is a benefit received by just being white as compared to a person of color in the same political, social, or economic sphere. In the case of enforcing local traffic laws, whites are privileged when compared to African-Americans. There are no white disparities. Whites either see no problem or have extreme difficulty in understanding how racial bias affects traffic stop outcomes, resulting in these racial disparities. Solving this problem will require far more courage and urgency than the city council has shown the past nine years. Admittedly, race relations, can I ask the city council for two more minutes just to finish?
Yeah, I can do that. Two minutes.
I appreciate it. Admittedly, race-related problems are difficult but has no place for excuses or inaction. A big first step, though, would be for the city council to simply publicly acknowledge these racial disparities are a serious community problem. Assert they are not reflective of our community or police department values, and our goal is to eliminate them as soon as possible. Mr. Rent reviewed the traffic stop data tonight. To be honest, little progress is evidenced in the data. Although the 2012 traffic stop ratio is 1.07, the lowest in nine years, for African-Americans, it's 1.85 in 2012. African-Americans are eighty-five percent more likely to be stopped last year than you would statistically expect. That's true, that's a fact, it was reported, it happened. We cannot continue to approach the problem the same way we have in the past. Another statistical study or in-house review by the Urbana Police Department is not sufficient.
One minute, Mr. Cruz.
The city administration and Human Relations Department and Police Department are too closely vested in each other to have an open, honest, and objective review of this problem. Therefore, any recommendation for moving forward must include a way to directly involve the public. The petition you received has simply asked you to open that up. I would love to work with the council and the city and the police department. I would love to share the information. You need to engage the public in resolution of this problem.
Chris Evans with a stated position of other.
Chris Evans, Ward Four. I, I think we, here is the problem that we do have, and you have to deal with it. Whether we understand the data, whether we tweak the numbers this way and that way, what isn't disputed is that African-Americans feel that the police department picks on them. That is an anecdotal condition, whether we like it or not, whether it's deserved or not. And I think, first of all, I applaud this council for taking the brave step of talking about this issue. Most bodies avoid it, and we try to hide it, and we kind of shove it aside and deny that it exists. It's very brave of you to have these conversations. I think it's, and it's also, it would be fair for our police department to have a full study of what's going on so that they don't have to live with the reputation that they're doing something they're not trying to do. The chief of police will no doubt come here and say it is not our policy to stop African-American drivers, you know, on purpose and out of disproportion of their population. Yet, the perception of the public is, is that's exactly what they're doing. In fact, if you just pop your head into the traffic court, it's amazing at how many African-Americans are in the traffic court. In my anecdotal experiences, I was stopped five times for legitimate reasons: out headlight, two times out taillight, an out muffler, and rolled through a stop sign. I didn't get a ticket. And what, I mean, while I should enjoy that fact, I have to say that it, I can imagine that if I did get a ticket, I would be nearly a thousand dollars in the hole. And the economic impact of getting a ticket, the choices that officers are making, is giving the police department a very bad reputation. So I would, and I'll put my time where my mouth is, and I will volunteer for any task force to study this issue. I think that it would be in the city's best interest and to do the due diligence to study this issue objectively. I'm surprised that we don't use Secretary of State information to digitally find out where all the driver's licenses go by race. I'm, and I'm, I've been thinking the digital age, we should be able to quickly be able to compile this information. But I think it's worth looking at, and it's worth trying to find out what is happening. I think we have the capability and the intelligence to do it, and let's exercise due diligence so that we can at least go back to the public and say, we have looked at this, and here's what we, you know, have discovered. I think it's completely worth, a worthwhile project, and that would benefit the police. It might clear their names, for all we know, or it might help them to, you know, understand what they're doing so they can make some adjustments. So I'm supportive of a task force, and I hope you vote for it. Thank you for your time.
Dr. Evelyn Underwood.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Oh, I'm Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, thirteen oh nine, West Tremont Street in Urbana, Illinois, six one eight zero one. I'm going to try to make it quick. First of all, I trust, I hope, that the council will move forward on the recommendation to form a task force, a task force to study the traffic stop, or the I dot traffic stop report and related issues. And did I say the recommendation to, to form a task force to this, to study I dot traffic stop and related issues? I've got too much stuff here because I wanted to include the fact that the people who signed the letter, the ACLU, the CU Citizens for Peace and Justice, NAACP, and the other organizations, and I wanted to make sure I included the Ministry of Alliance of Champaign, Urbana, and vicinity of which I am a member. And, and I mean unanimously, we voted that we should do this. And a lot of members of our churches are for this. And this week, when we announced that we were coming to this meeting, a lot of people talked to us after church about what's going on with them, and I just have to say amen, 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 to what Mr. Cruz, our brother Cruz, has stated. Additionally, I spoke to, I feel nervous that you're going to cut me off, so let me hurry up, a former, a Human Relations Commissioner this week. And she was telling me that she, that was about fifteen years ago she was on, I think, eleven to fifteen years ago. And I couldn't hardly get her off the phone, talking about the fact that they, they were dealing with these issues way back then. And she trusts and hopes that we get the public involved in these issues and we get them settled. So I'm going to cut this off, thank you.
Martell Miller.
Martell Miller, general delivery. I'm going to start this. I've been coming to this council, dealing with the police departments about some of the issues about traffic stuff going on in the community with black African-American males, from Mike Beely, Mr. Conley. We had, we'd have conversation about some things when Anthony Cobb was Assistant Chief, and we had a conversation about the stopping of African-American men. And not only in Urbana, Champaign, I didn't talk to them, University of Illinois Police, I didn't talk to them, the Sheriff Department, I didn't talk to them. It, it's not just a banner problem, it's a whole Champaign County problem. When I was young, we had a thing that we would call it, and we'd call it driving while black. You know, you ain't got to do nothing to get stopped. And if you, if you want to look at a lot of cars, and which I do now, with traffic violations, the most vehicle without a front license plate is a Ford F-150. Just drive around and look, there's a bunch of them don't have the front license plate. And think who's the, look who you think drives most of them trucks? It's not an African-American man. And if you start pulling over them, all them, that don't have a front license plate, y'all could reap a lot of money, you know, if you want to do it like that, but you'd be stopping white males. Then I sit up here and I, I'm going to go off a little because you had Todd Rent sit up here, talk for ten minutes. You give the public five minutes. The public elect y'all officials. So something ought to be fair about how we present it back to y'all other than five minutes, because we don't, five minutes is not enough. I have talked to Todd Rent for several years about racial profiling. To me, his job is to make it like it don't exist. He's a black male. I guarantee he'd have been stopped while driving black. So we can't ignore that problem. I'm just going to ask, and I'm going to get up from here, ask the city council, be diligent at dealing with this problem. And how you deal with this problem is invite the public to be part of it. Thank you.
Beldenfields.
Beldenfields, two oh six, West Pennsylvania. Yavendu, I'm a little bit concerned about how we're talking about the statistics because I think that I'm getting the impression that what some people are trying to say is that Urbana is somehow different from virtually every other community in the United States, where we know that there are disparities of this nature. And the question is, how do we deal with them? How do we try to deal with them adequately? It reminds me a little bit of when I sat down, was interviewing a French mayor, where some Africans in a residence had been attacked violently by people in this French town, and he had been accused of stirring up a mob against them. And we sat down and he said, in French, of course, "The first thing I want to understand, Mr. Fields, is I'm not a racist." And I said, "Mr. Mayor, please don't tell me that. I come from a racist society. I see the racism in myself, I was raised in that society." We ought not to be denying that we're racist. We ought to be trying to recognize the racism in ourselves and do something about that. And I, I hope that we're not denying something which is going on and that we all know is going on, regardless of how we parse the statistics. I want to say a couple of other things. I have a good number of African-American friends on the faculty at the university. They won't drive, and they have expensive cars usually, they like expensive cars. They won't drive in the African-American areas of either Champaign or Urbana. They have to come in on Lincoln Avenue to get back into town or something, they'll do it, but they won't, because they've been stopped too many times. Must be a drug dealer's got an expensive car, you know, a black guy. Something else I want to raise is that it doesn't help that we have so few black officers on the force. Maybe there could be some attention devoted to that. Actually, the university police force seems to do a better job of minority recruitment than either of the two cities. Finally, something Councilman Brown said, I think is important, about the economic impact this has when you over-enforce on African-Americans who tend to be poor. That, that costs a lot of money, takes a lot of money out of that society. Secondly, there might be some other kinds of offenses that we should stipulate no longer our grounds for stopping. I haven't seen anything regarding noise offenses, radios, loud radios. When I was dealing with this over years ago in Champaign and talking to the city attorney, I said, "Why don't you just forget about that as an offense?" You know, some people culturally like their music loud. Forget it, don't stop the car, nobody's going to get hurt by this. We could also relook at equipment offenses. You know, if there's a taillight out, no big deal. You know, I have driven around with a headlight on, I didn't notice until I came up and I parked against the wall, and I saw I had only one light on. It wasn't a big deal, you know, at some point, I'm going to discover that. So I think maybe we, you should reflect, forget the statistics and the competing statistics. We know there's a reality here. Whether we're getting a little better, getting a little worse, I think what we need to do is consciously try to raise the question
You have one minute, Mr. Fields.
and see what we can do to make this more equitable. But once again, I do think we need to do something about the lack of minority representation on the police force. Thank you.
Susan Parenti.
Hello, my name is Susan Parenti, Dr. Susan Parenti. I'm speaking now as a person who has taught writing, creative and otherwise, for the past twenty-five years. I've taught at Parkland College for eight years, Allen Hall, was a teaching assistant in rhetoric, adult extension, School for Designing Society. An essay I often have given the students in order to understand who they are is the topic, "What Experiences Have You Had That Make You Fear Living the Rest of Your Life?" I'll repeat that. This is the topic. What experiences have you had that make you fear living, fear, fear living the rest of your life? When my students were African-American, particularly the males, I'd say fifty percent of them spoke about the experiences of driving while black. The things that shocked me, a young man who was always sleeping in my night class, and I was appalled that he would dare sleep during my class, and when I finally asked him, he was African-American, he told me that he drove past a place where a burglary was happening, and the police accosted him. And though he was innocent, he had to go to trial, and he had to pay a lawyer, and now he had three jobs. And that kind of shut me in my tracks. But the essays that people wrote about the experience, the audacity to find out that they were not doing anything wrong and the police stopped them, was horrific. So I'm saying this to you now. I guess I may be not so polite. I am questioning your competency on this issue. Charlie, have you been stopped because of racial disparity while driving? And has that made you fear the rest of your life? It's not rhetorical. Eric. Carol, not. Bill, you have been stopped, I know, but I'm speaking to men, males, let me just. Dennis.
Yes.
Okay? All right? Michael. All right. And just the rest of you. I'm, what Aaron has said, what other people have said, because this again brings up the one percent and the ninety-nine percent, you need to listen to the people who have been stopped. You need to listen to the people You need to listen to the people who have the problem. You don't have the problem, maybe Dennis has, you don't have the problem, but you are here to avidly find those people who have the problem and to listen to them. Mayor? Thank you. So I am in support of this committee. I think this is the least you can do. The elephant in the room, you know, check Youtubes. Driving While Black is one of the biggest Youtubes. Just check them. Because now people have those, those phones, you know, and they can show what's going on. And there has been such a rate, enormous rate of increase of Youtubes on Driving While Black. You're not black, you don't have the experience, you have not had the fear. This is your public duty to at least have a committee that looks into this. Thank you very much.
Okay, that concludes the public input. Is there any discussion among council? Carol?
I'll speak to the big elephant in the room. I don't know how many of you know, of course, I represent an African American district largely. Earlier today, I received an email about an incident in the city of Detroit for which I was born. Young lady is in a traffic incident. She had an accident. It was just a regular accident in the car, but she was injured, it was dark. So she runs to a person's home to knock on the door and attempt to get assistance, and the person who came to the door shot her in the face and killed her. This is currently happening, currently. And because of the laws, the person, of course, was not arrested, and there's quite a bit of outrage in Detroit over this incident as we speak. It's unfortunate for me because I'm the only person of color on this council, and therefore I have to speak to the obvious experience of people that come from my community. I have been to the courtroom and I have been in there observing a very strange and odd phenomenon. When you go to the courthouse, any courtroom at any point, you will notice a very high number of African Americans. Some believe that that's because they commit the most crimes. That is a, that is a myth, and people actually do believe that. Some also believe that they pass through more stop signs than anyone else, and that's why the traffic court is full of African Americans. Primarily, if you take a minute and sit in the courtroom, you'll also notice that the age of those is also unique in the experience of traffic court. So today, I did do a little research and I was looking for some things to, playing with numbers always throws everybody in a loop. So I decided to just look across other cities to see what was happening around the issue of traffic stops. Many of us know that there is a disparate pattern of traffic stops from coast to coast. So it really isn't unique to Urbana. It's not unique to Champaign or Champaign County. It is truly across the country, and you can pull up any city anywhere and find the same type of disparity. Whether it's racially, ethnically, there's a disparity in search and seizures. Based on research findings, there's some accuracy in how police are trained to pick up on clues or dispositions of drivers and things like that that could be looked at as indicators. Another thing that I found interesting across the country is numerous research studies that examine traffic stop data collected by departments across the country have generally shown racial and ethnic disparities in the rates of traffic stops and traffic stop disposition when that is in relationship to citations, arrests and searches, and dogs' sniffs. That was pretty much the same also across the country, and I found that to be ironic. Particularly problematic was the growing body of research suggesting that minority motorists were significantly more likely to be searched by police during traffic stops, but less likely to be found in possession of contraband compared to Caucasian drivers. That is a research fact. I actually found that at the University of Illinois Research Statistics on Traffic Stop Data, right actually down the street. Further studies also take into consideration the potential impact of law enforcement training that also contributes to these kind of results. The other thing I found that was significant is researchers can generally be more confident in their findings of statistical analysis that examine traffic stop dispositions because at least some of those things are collected by legal recourses, meaning you can go to the courthouse, look at the actual cases, and then you can draw some conclusions from that. So it's not, it's not abstract, it's actually numbers and people. The other thing that I found in this study at the university is others have argued that it's unrealistic to believe that individual racial biases can account for all of the racial or ethnic disparities reported in search and seizure rates across the country. So even though we live in a small community like Champaign, Urbana, in Chicago, they couldn't make this, they, they had the same problem but couldn't make it connect to the same issues. Like, we're a smaller town, they're a larger town, but they still had the same problem in stops based on race and ethnicity. Vehicle and person searches in the United States, the majority of which are unfruitful, the collection is unfruitful, they don't find any contraband. Although you don't find them, you still see the higher number of racial stops among African Americans. And then finally, the importance of understanding why, this is why this is important. We have to understand why police agencies across the country continue to demonstrate racial and ethnic disparities in search and seizure rates that cannot be understood. They can't be understood because there's no massive movement to understand them. That is what we're talking about this evening. Citizens' perception of selective enforcement lead to negative attitudes and resulting tensions between officers and citizens that can potentially jeopardize the effectiveness of the legal authorities. We, in Urbana, don't want the experience of these other communities, which is why this was brought to our attention as a city council, for us to say, "No, we don't want to just take the nine-year aggregate numbers and say it looks a little better. We actually want to find out how to attack it systemically so that when you go to the courthouse, you don't see what we see right now. It's overwhelmingly 85 to 90% of those defendants are African American." And we look at this, this data that we report to the state, and we take our numbers and send it to them, and it still, it still draws down to an ethnic or racial disparity. We cannot ignore that, and we cannot wish it away. So the best way to deal with any problem is to come up, as I used to sit on the mayor's task force when we came up with the CPRB, we had to study and do research and put together a team to come up with an ordinance that would make sense for Urbana. This is what we need to do in relationship to this study, working with our police department, working with our citizens and researchers at the U of I, and then come up with some policy issues that we can use to address this. And so I recommend that the council, that a recommendation to the council be made, oh, I should make this as a motion, a move that the recommendation be sent to the city council for the establishment of a citizens' police research committee for I Doc Traffic Studies, I don't know what they call it at this point, but that's what I'm calling it, that we put together outline of what we'd like to have for an appointment of a committee to study our nine-year aggregate and come up with some actual solutions to this problem. That's my motion. I'd love to have a second.
I'll do that. Carol, could you please restate your motion for the benefit of the chair? I'm so sorry, I can't write that fast.
Clark, can you read that back? That was a little difficult to put in language. I'm asking that the committee of the whole send forward to the city council a recommendation for the establishment of a citizens' police I Doc Traffic Study Commission. And you can call it something better once we figure it out.
Right, it's been moved and seconded. Moved by Carol, seconded by Dennis. Discussion, Dennis?
Sure, I do. I think, I think that it has merit, has value to look into this and at least address an issue that obviously has come up repeatedly in conversation pretty much since I've been on city council. And we may find that our officers are actually performing their duty, you know, explicitly well, and there is no problem, just as was suggested. Or we may find that there can be adjustments to procedure or practice which increase the fairness in the community. We don't know how to do that quite yet, but we, why not look at it? I mean, that certainly cannot hurt. I guess the question has been raised that who is really qualified to make the review of the data so that there can be a true and in-depth understanding of what the data's telling us? And I'm not a statistician, and this is not my strong point. And therefore, if this is going to be a study that ends up being of great value, can we rely upon enthusiastic individuals in the, in the citizenry of the audience who feel like they want to have results but perhaps don't have background? Or are we talking about potentially to make this really a valuable study, or maybe not, a consultant? And I'm just wondering, Carol, if you have thoughts about what this is going to require?
Well, I think the composition of the committee can, that the city council can put together what they want the composition of the committee to be, similar to what we did for the CPRB, and put forward recommendations to the mayor as far as appointing those people to the CPRB. Certainly, we want people from the police department, people from the community. We have certainly a great university research institution in our community that we can draw from. And I have a couple people, but I hate to put their names out, that I would suggest and ask to be on this kind of committee because they specialize in either sociology, criminal justice at the university. So without asking them, I wouldn't put their names out, but I do have some recommendations on composition.
So you're saying there are professional people available?
I think so. I think- I think this really needs to be a community effort with our, possibly a council member or two in the police department, without necessarily hiring a person to do what I believe we can do right here in our community.
Okay, Charlie, then Eric?
Yeah, I, I guess I'd like to see, and I don't know what your timeframe is, whether you want to see this go to council next week or in three weeks. I'd like to see along the lines of what Dennis was saying, this fleshed out a little more, what the actual tasks are, what some of the duties are, what are the things they're gonna look at. As, as we talked, I thought about eight different dimensions that need to be examined from a statistical point of view. Bill has alluded to how difficult the statistical part of this will be, or could be. It may not even be possible to come up with a statistical part to this. You mentioned the sociology of it. This may be more a sociological problem. And, you know, that scenario, I have no clue, you know, that's, to me is a fairly touchy-feely area without the statistical type stuff that I'm used to working with in my own training. So, so I would like to see it, so meat on the bones here before we really go forward. I support it going forward. We do need to study this in some fashion and come to some kind of conclusion. We've seen a decrease in the number. Why has that happened? There are three questions there that can be asked, you know? Why have we seen a decrease? Or is it random? Why do we continue to see difference in sniffs and consent searches? And, you know, where are we on minority recruiting and why is it so hard to fill? You know, why is it so hard to have a representative police department of the underlying population? So there are a whole, a whole lot of questions, both statistical and sociological, that need to be asked, and I think those need to be put together in a package before we go forward so we can actually target this a little bit so that people just don't go off on a wild goose chase and that in six months or a year, we'd actually have some, some real results.
Eric?
Yeah, I, I expect to vote in favor of this. I'm a, I'm a scientist, so I'm a professional skeptic. And one of the things that really bothered me about, well, I wouldn't say it bothered me. One of the things I noticed about the report that we reviewed is that it really didn't take any explicit account of the body of knowledge that's out there. There were no, there were no references. So I, I spent, you know, not days and days, but I spent about half a day just going online and looking at what has been written in peer-reviewed journals about how to peel through these statistics. So that was really one of the reasons that I asked about the daytime and nighttime because one of the, that, that's, you know, there's a phrase that, that one group of people has who've, who've written about this. They call it "traffic stops under the veil of darkness." And the presumption is, as, as you might expect, that it would be very much harder for a police officer to determine before making a stop, the race of the driver at night as opposed to the daytime. So one, so that would be one of the indications of a bias on the basis of race would be to look for that. Other things that people try to account for are the, you know, the level of patrolling in particular neighborhoods is, are, are increases in stops related to that. So I, and I think it's very important that we get this right. It's very important that we get this right because on the one hand, we're faced with issues of fairness, and on the other hand, we're faced with an issue of public safety. And because, you know, driving accidents really hurt people. The, so, so I think it is important to, to do this. I think it's important to do it right. I guess the other kind of research that really needs to be done in social science, and I don't pretend to be a social scientist, but I sort of dabble in everything, the other kind of research, other than the statistical research, is what the social scientists call ethnographic. And so basically ethnographic is dig down and find out, you know, case histories, what actually happens in a traffic stop? What actually happens in a traffic stop or some array of representative traffic stops when the driver is, is Caucasian, when the driver is African American, when the driver's Asian, when the driver's Hispanic, and so forth? So it's a lot of work, it's a big job to get it right. I think that, I think that we ought to presume, and I think it's, it's not only the right thing to do, but I think it's both the most useful thing to do, and I think it's also the right thing to do. I think we really ought to presume on the part of everybody who's involved in this, I think we ought to presume that everybody wants to do the right thing. I don't think there's anybody involved in this who is evil. And, and, and I think that's really the tone of remarks that I've already heard, but I wanted to say that explicitly.
Okay, Diane?
I support taking a deeper look at this and trying once and for all to understand what's going on, not only from a statistical standpoint, but the human standpoint. And in, in the end, it's what's happening to people in the community and its perceptions on all sides. And I frankly don't know what the outcome will be, but it's, you know, it's time that we look at it. And so I do agree with Charlie, I think it'd be nice to have a little more structure to what we're directing, but also we need to get input in terms of what questions to be asking. And that's the experts, some of the experts are in the audience and the others are in the community, and, and some are on our staff, et cetera. So, so I think it's time to go forward, and this has just been hanging over everyone's heads for way too long, and we should just look at it once and for all and see what we find. And we may be surprised.
Phil?
Yeah, yeah, I support looking at this with a community group, too. I'm kind of surprised it hasn't happened already on its own. I remember before the Police Review Board Commission, there was a kind of informal group of people who met with Ricky Baldwin, I think, and kind of a police review board group that got together and tried to get police review boards in both cities. group that got together and tried to get police review boards in both cities. So that hasn't really happened, but I think it has kind of happened at individual levels, and occasionally people have gotten together and shared notes. So this is probably the next step, and I think we're ready for it. I wanted to point out, the state has one of these. They call it the Racial Profiling Prevention and Data Oversight Board. And for the first five years of its existence, nobody was appointed to it. For the last couple of years, finally someone was appointed. They met once so far in January, and they don't have any minutes online. But one of their members is a member of, yeah, a member of the academic community with expertise in statistics and law enforcement. So it might be good, if they ever meet, to kind of track what they're doing and compare what we're doing to what they're doing. I'm sure we'll do it better. I think there's a couple of different kinds of disparities to keep in mind, that there's disparate treatment of people and disparate impact. And what the police can control is the disparate treatment. They can make sure to hire good people, and, you know, with our chief being a good interviewer and investigator, that goes a long way in hiring good people and understanding whether they're likely to racially profile people, and if they are, to try to correct them before it happens, and just kind of a general awareness among the force. I think, I think people are highly aware of that. So I think that this group needs to kind of also be looking at what can we do? I mean, even if we go through the statistics and find out that, yeah, there's still a disparity, 10% or 15% or whatever we come up with, what can we actually do? Because I don't think it's a conscious disparity, and so it's a little bit harder to, you know, it's not a conscious effort to create that disparity. So that's something I think people need to look at on this committee. And then they also need to look at how to fix the disparate impact in the community, whether it's economic, or if there's ways, like Beldon was talking about, to reduce the impact of a broken taillight, if you can hook them up with somebody that'll fix it, or, you know, offer more car mechanics courses or whatever. Maybe some things like that will come out of it, too. So, yeah, I would support it. I wouldn't support a real heavy staff presence. I think there's a lot of people in the community that can do it, but I hope staff would be available to answer questions and provide statistics in an efficient manner.
Carol?
I just want to ask two questions. One, Bill, if the committee had composition that we could look at from the state one. And then the second thing is, I respect Charlie's suggestion also. We're not necessarily, like, we're not on a timeframe here. We really want to do it well and put together good composition for the committee task force, whatever we call it. And so I would like to just amend the time as to where it's going, and suggest that we actually continue it in committee of the whole until we can put together composition, you know, focus, scope, and things like that, that the committee could work with the public to develop, and then we can move forward from that point, but move it to the committee of the whole, the next committee of the whole, to continue to work on this, the setup of it.
Charlie?
Thank you, Carol. I think, well, you know, given that Eric's done some background research here on other studies and such, it behooves us to do the definitive study. It would be really neat if we could do the definitive study in some fashion. I'm a little worried about the cost, given our budgetary limitations. But if we can put the right combination of people together, the right combination of issues, we know the police department has made changes over the past 10 years in their training, and we know police officers have changed, and so, so it's a moving target that we're working with, too. You know, so there's other dimensions here, statistical, sociological, training, and so on. And putting a definitive package together that looks at it over time, in addition to, you know, just the numbers themselves, you know, just trying to figure out what has been, what actions have we taken over time, and have they had an effect, becomes another part of this. So with the idea of, say, you know, fleshing this out over the next couple of weeks, is someone here on council willing to accumulate ideas and try to put some together? I'm willing to help, but I can't take, I can't offer to be the main spokesperson here to put it all together. I don't know if the mayor would let us use a staff person. I know the public is going to provide lots of ideas and pieces to that. We all have ideas of people who could come to the table and give us a hand with this, but what's our mechanism for putting this all together now?
Madam Mayor?
Well, I think people should say what questions they want answered. And I do think that it's not, what people have been talking about is not the traffic study. You're talking about racism in general. That was what I heard, that there is discrimination, there's attitudes that need to be changed. And I think that the statistics that we've seen have changed quite a bit just by having the different census data used. So I don't, we don't have the staff, quite frankly. If you want to ask who is available to do this, we have a Human Relations Commission, we have a Citizens Review Board for the police, and perhaps those two commissions could do it. But I don't have a staff person that I could task this with. And so I think we should start by defining what we want to know, and ask the public to submit the kind of things that they want studied in specific ways, and work that with the council, and just have some public dialogue on this before we go any further. That'll give us a clearer idea of what we could do.
Carol?
I would, again, my recommendation and motion is to keep it in committee of the whole, so that we can put together a structure and scope, as well as possible people to participate. And we certainly would want, we have to have, see, I don't want the committee to do what had to be done in establishing the CPRB. Because if we remember back when Ricky Baldwin was working on the CPRB, because it was not a cooperative relationship with the cities, they had to FOIA documents all day long. It took so much, it still ended up taking staff time, right? So if you start using the FOIA process, then staff are tied up in FOIAs. But if you put together a commission similar to what we did in Urbana to research the CPRB finally, then you don't have this constant requesting outside of FOIA documents and, you know, agitated relationships and all that. We should simply put together what we want. We can keep it in committee of the whole so that we can drill down how we want the research to be done. We can look at studies that have been done already across the country, and apply some of those things, and then develop things that work better for our community. That's what I want to do.
I need to have a correction, Carol. That was my proposal to have a civilian review board for the police, and I set up a task force to figure out, you know, how the commission should be structured, and it was very ably handled by, there she is, Esther Pat. She did a great job, and we thought about it for a long time. We worked about a year on it. So it was my initiative, so that's the fact. Thank you.
Charlie?
Yeah, actually, I heard something from the audience that I think, if I heard it right, is probably part of the solution to this, which is the task force itself can help define some of the pieces of what can be done. Yeah, and so, yeah, and I think we understand that, and we've gotten, we've gotten quite a bit of input. So I think what we do is, over the next couple of weeks, we get some more input, we get some of you to take a lead role in putting that, putting some of that together, and help us flesh this out, so that in about two weeks, we have a better idea of exactly what the, we need parameters that we're going to work with. And I think if we can put those together over the next couple of weeks, we can, we can get something done. But it would be, but I think our challenge here is to do something that is unique, useful for the nation, and, you know, a definitive piece of work. I think we have an opportunity here to do something that will benefit a lot of us, will benefit our society.
Mike Royce, several months ago, I was at a conference somewhere, where he says, "We tend to overthink things in this community," and we do, instead of sometimes just doing something. And I guess I'm of the opinion, or leaning toward, we were brought information about traffic stops, and we've heard a lot of concern about the impact of driving while black and the impact on people. And frankly, that's the place to start. That's where we have the questions about the statistics, that's where we have the information, that's where the concern is of the people who are here tonight. So I, it'd be nice to have a nationally significant study coming out of this, but good grief, let's just focus on what's going on in our own community. Let's keep this narrowly focused on what the problem is, as perceived by the people who are the brunt, you know, receiving, on the receiving end, and for the people who are enforcing our laws, fair or not, and see what we find. And then if we want to go on to a national study that can be, you know, have, send us all to conferences and give presentations, fine. But let's just figure out what's going on right here in Urbana, because there's a lot of unique things about this university community that aren't going to translate to a whole lot of other cities in this, in this state. And I, and I think we should figure out what's going on right here, and then see where we want to go from there, so.
Eric?
So I think maybe Charlie and Diane are in violent agreement. The, and so maybe I'll get everybody mad at me. No, I'd really like to get involved in this. As some of you know, Naomi and I have several adopted children, and one of them is an African-American male. We went through the whole thing as he was growing up of, you know, we would, we started to, you know, add to kids' allowance by giving them little, you know, checks to cash for doing extra chores, and they'd go down to the bank, and our birth son would have no problem cashing his check, and our African-American son would have a big problem cashing his check. And then we went through, got a little older, we talked about, you know, driving while black, so I didn't have the experience myself, but I did get perhaps a more, a closer view of this, because there was someone, there was a young man whom I loved, who's now a middle-aged man, whom I still love, who had to go through this, and we tried to help him as well as we could. So, and he's turned out great, probably through no fault of ours. But the, so I'm really interested in this, and if I can somehow, you know, bridge this nerd universe that I live in with the universe of real people, I'll try to help with that as much as I can.
Any further comments?
Okay, there's a motion before the committee by Carol Ammons, that the committee of the whole develop a recommendation to form a citizen traffic stop study commission with the goal of sending it to the city council at the next meeting of the committee. Seconded by Dennis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion is adopted. Okay. Agenda item number six, a presentation regarding Champaign County Greenways and Trails Plan 2013.
Hi. While Gabe's getting started, I'll just remind everyone that this is an initiative that we started earlier this year, so some of you may not have been on council, and it's a, an update to a plan, countywide plan for greenways and trails. And there's actually 11 other agencies that have partnered with us, and the Regional Planning Commission received a grant to do this plan, and Gabe Lewis is with the Regional Planning Commission, and he's going to give us an update.
Thanks, Libby. I don't know if you can hear me. Good evening, council. I'm Gabe Lewis, transportation planner with the Regional Planning Commission. Thanks for having me tonight. As Libby explained, this is an update to our 2004 Champaign County Greenways and Trails Plan. So our planning efforts have, go back decades in Champaign County, and since the last plan, we've kept the steering committee together and been working on some implementation efforts. And again, as Libby said, we do have 11 member agencies, and we've added St. Joe actually during this process. IDNR, Department of Natural Resources, funded the last update, and IDOT is funding this plan update. So the focus of this plan is twofold, active transportation, which is mainly walking and biking, looking at hard surface trails and on-street bikeways, and then the environment, greenways broken out by type, parks, private recreational spaces, forest preserves, things of that nature. So one of the first things we did was a literature review. We compiled the documents that were completed since the 2004 plan, and there were five at the state level and 40 at the local level, lots of active transportation documents and greenway plans. Really great to see everybody's interested in that, and there's a lot of good stuff to take out of that. From there, we updated our existing conditions inventory for greenways, which includes athletic facilities, and have it broken out in the document by geographic area. And we found that since 2004, there's been almost a 3% increase in public parks within the member agency jurisdictions. And then the other things that we did inventory for were trails and bikeways. We're making that distinction now to note that trails are off-street, bikeways are on-street, again, breaking it out by geographic area. And since 2004, up through last year, we found an increase in a variety of facilities, almost 80% in trails, over 120% in bike lanes, and then the addition of shared lane markings in the system. And then finally, we had an inventory of a variety of environmental elements, which showed that we have some scenic and biologically rich areas that are preserved as greenways and trails in the county. We also looked at how air quality can relate to trails and health. So with those inventories in place, we looked at issues and forces, what's affecting greenway and trail development. These were most, these were grouped into three main categories, accessibility, connectivity, and safety. And so those are three themes that we are focusing on in this plan. From there, we developed a needs assessment regarding connectivity and accessibility. We looked at those elements for both trails and greenways. And so for the trails, we found that variety, 45% had access to walking trails and 70% to biking trails, as defined in this plan. And then from there, we used that to develop some greenway accessibility measures, and found that 90% of the county households have bikeway access to public greenways. And access is good in both urban and rural areas, since there's more parks in the areas, in the county. The next thing we looked at are our goals and objectives. We had 28 objectives, six goals, 28 objectives in the 2004 plan, and we found that 20 of those are met or in progress, leaving only eight unmet, so we're happy to see that. And then we, the Greenways and Trails Technical Committee and RPC staff worked to update these goals, and one thing that we're doing is following the Federal Highway Administration model of creating SMART objectives, which is an acronym for specific, measurable, agreed-upon, realistic, and time-bound, so that everybody can, we can have some more realistic objectives to evaluate the plan in the future and see if we're making any progress. And then another way to do that is to actually create performance measures, which is just a way of analyzing those objectives. So here we have the slide explaining SMART objectives, and we're doing that in our other plans, the Long Range Transportation Plan. You may be aware of the bus that we had around town, so we're trying to get these objectives in place with our plans. objectives in, in place with our plans. So we brought this information last year to our first series of public workshops. November, we went around the county in Champaign-Urbana, Mohammed, and St. Joe to present existing conditions and everything else that I mentioned, and asked for feedback on where people wanted to see greenways and trails. From there, we started working on some recommendations. One thing that we've done since the last plan is create a design guidelines document, and that was not in the previous plan, but it outlines what type of facilities we have in the system, or that we predict will be in the system, and then brings in measurements, specifications, best practices from state and national documents to try to use at the local level, as well as local agency preferences. And then kind of the meat of the plan is the future transportation conditions section. We compiled trail and bikeway projects from many plans. Most that were listed in the literature review was twenty-two agency plans, three more draft plans, some grant applications, and public, and then a few from public input sessions and our recommendations, just to connect a few links in the network. So we have maps broken out. And here in Urbana and Champaign, we have four maps to try to focus in on the certain parts of town, so it's a little easier to digest. And then implementation, what a lot of people want to know, that's great, you're recommending paths and bikeways, but how are we going to get it built? Another thing we've done since the last plan is create a funding sources list, and that compiles state, federal, private, and nonprofit sources to try to implement some of these projects. A new, a section we have are non-infrastructure recommendations. These are broken out into seven, seven categories, four of which are some of the E's we work with in transportation, active transportation, as well as policy, conservation, and maintenance. And then some information about the future conditions of our environment in terms of developing the greenway system as it has effects on health and the, and the environment. So we brought all of this information to our second public workshop in April, which was an open house style for people to vote on their preferred bikeways or trails. And we compiled that information. We had pretty good turnout overall, almost forty responses with voting continuing in the following weeks. And so now we are working on finalizing the draft plan, and we actually shared that with our technical committee today for review. It will go online for a public comment period next Tuesday, starting Tuesday, November nineteenth, and that'll go through Wednesday, December eighteenth, when we have a technical committee meeting, and we're also going to call the policy committee to review and hopefully approve the document. I should note that our contract with IDOT ends at the end of the year, too, but they'll, they're staying involved with the process, and we'll, we'll be submitting the plan to IDOT by the end of the year and making any changes they may have at that time.
Okay, any questions? Charlie?
Gabe, you probably know I'm going to ask this. Is there any way to get our current numbers updated so that we reflect the total number of bike lanes and stuff, you know, from the Save Routes to School project and whatnot that's just getting done, Main Street and all that?
Yes. There's actually a section at the beginning of the future transportation conditions. The very first part is 2013 projects. So the existing conditions, as you might know, went through 2012, and then we list what was built this year, which was a lot. And then that won't be counted as future. It's, it's existing.
Any further comments or questions? All right, thank you, Gabe.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Eric?
Oh, I'll just take the occasion, because it's somewhat relevant to this because of the striping, to say that it's really a pleasure to go through downtown now. So thanks to everybody who made that happen. And I'm sure it's much more of a pleasure for bicyclists as well as others.
I'd go so far as to say it's great to drive from way out on East Main Street clear to downtown. It's all, it's all great. And you had a lot of weather challenges, but it was a job well done. I drove it every day and did not feel inconvenienced. It was well worth the wait. Carol?
I just had one question and one comment, but the question is, did this study, and I came to the second one, so I didn't see the first one, but did this study include the survey information that was done?
Was it what you-
The biking and walking survey?
Right, what you had at the open house?
At the open house?
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We compiled those responses. It's an appendix in the document, and we looked at that to actually help rank the proposed projects. So-
Okay.
If I can just elaborate for a second.
Okay.
The implementation is based on sixteen criteria that were developed for each project, and we evaluate each project individually. And one of those criteria is, did it receive public comment? And by voting on a path, either a bikeway or trail at that open house, it received a point. So that directly affected.
Okay. And just my sidebar comment, just this week, I walked at Meadowbrook Park, which I think we have great walking paths in this community. So I walked at 7:00 a.m. at Meadowbrook Park. Me and my friend are walking down the path, and next thing I know, a huge buck comes running across our path, almost made me have a heart attack. I was scared to death, but we, we had a beautiful path walk.
Charlie?
Actually, I think one of the challenges is going to be figuring out connectivity, especially from a bicycle point of view. There are certain places that are hard to get, certain roads that are hard to cross. I think it's a little easier in Urbana than Champaign in, in some of these respects. If you look at the, the latest version of the bicycle map, we circle the intersections, you know, on recommended routes and such, where it is a problem to get across. And Champaign's trying to deal with a pedestrian crossing that's, that's difficult in the same sort of way. As we move to active, you know, to encouraging active transportation, you know, the, the idea of, of roads are for everyone. Getting connectivity solved for pedestrians and bicyclists across some of these busy intersections is the big challenge.
Any further questions or comments? All right. Dennis?
So yes, so we've commented about the improvements on Main Street downtown. And the one thing that I see that I don't understand completely is why the proliferation of three-and-a-half-foot-high stanchions or posts to mount the request for a change of signal for those who are probably using the crosswalks, maybe they want to have a timed cross. And I'm sort of wondering why they were placed in the center of the sidewalk where they seem to be more of an impediment, and why weren't they placed attached to one of the signal posts that are so prominently a fixture of the downtown now? And so now each, 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 each corner, there could be four now, that have these three-and-a-half-foot posts right in the middle of the path, and they don't seem necessary to be there unless there is some peculiar federal regulation that we are following.
There could be. I know it's not in our design guidelines. I'll defer, I don't know if Bill will be able to answer that better.
You don't want to take that one, Gabe? Those are the pedestrian signal detection for people of all mobility. And there are specific regulations, requirements as to the locations of those to accommodate folks with various disabilities. So the locations, although they may appear to be in the middle of a pathway, though, I'd like to see the location you're referring to, are strategically placed to meet those guidelines. And there's dimensions and such, and guidance given to engineering staff as to where those locations are. So there's a lot of, every intersection has various geometric challenges to them and, and such, but their locations are fairly strategic and intentional. So I could provide, if you're interested, the, you know, requirements and such, but where they're located in downtown, Race and Main, Broadway and Main are to make those accommodations.
Yeah, I, I still think that they make no sense when you're a pedestrian and looking at them. Even if you're in a wheelchair, certainly you can reach the post, which is also at the same level, and certainly within a wheeling distance. They are in the very center of the sidewalks, on each corner of Race and Main, so they're an impediment in every single direction that you walk. And many people have said, "Why were they placed here?" And so therefore you're saying they're supposed to be-
Yeah, I'd be happy to provide that information to council.
Anyone else? Now, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is item number seven, ordinance number 2013-11-103, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 23, Persons with Disabilities Parking. Staff report or staff presentation?
This item is an ordinance recommending revisions to the Urbana Local Traffic Code related to changes in the Illinois State Statute and the Secretary of State's parking program for persons with disabilities. Effective January first, the Secretary of State will be issuing a new form of placard. It will be referred to as the Meter Exempt Permanent Placard. And effective January first, that will be the only placard where a person holding that will be exempt from paying parking meters. And this ordinance includes language changes to the city's traffic code to be consistent with the state changes. So staff recommends approval of that ordinance.
Any questions or comments? Dan?
Yeah, I got a phone call from a constituent about this a while back, and I, this kind of makes more sense now, but he was under the impression that, he has a handicap parking tag, and he's under the impression that he no longer would have meter exempt status with that tag. Is that right, or?
That's what I'm understanding, is that the current blue placard will remain in effect, but you will no longer be exempt from paying parking meter fees with that blue pack, packer, placard.
But you can apply for a different placard, and then you could still get the meter exemption?
Correct. You can apply for the new placard. It looks different. It's a yellow and gray striped placard, and it will be only that one. If you have that, you'll be exempt from paying for parking meters.
And there's no difference in the qualifications for it or anything?
I think, I believe the standards are higher. It's more stringent qualification requirements for the new placard.
Okay.
Dennis?
Yeah. And then the other things, I was wondering about the very same thing, whether these tag people would still, well, would be able to not pay at the meter. My second question was, the provision seems to allow people to get a marked disability permanent parking spot in front of their home on the street if they qualify, and if a sign is erected at their street. And it seemed to me that that was being discouraged earlier, so I'm trying to understand if this, is that a change, or is that merely a continuance of practice?
I'm going to have to plead ignorance on that element of this, and look into that and get back to you.
Carol?
I'd like to make a motion that ordinance number 2013-11-103 be sent to council with a recommendation of approval.
Moved by Carol, seconded by Charlie to advance this ordinance to council for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the motion is adopted.
Mr. Chair?
Carol?
I'm sorry, I was just, did you mean, you didn't mean nay yourself, you just meant any nays?
No, all opposed, say nay.
Okay.
Right.
Agenda item number eight, ordinance number 2013-11-104, Annual Tax Levy Ordinance of the City of Urbana, Illinois, for the year beginning July first, 2013, and ending June thirtieth, 2014.
Evening again. This item is the introduction of the annual tax levy ordinance. The ordinance is usually passed in November and must be filed with the county clerk by the last Tuesday in December. Property tax levy is based on three factors, and those are the final equalized assessed value, the actual dollar amount of the levy, and the tax levy rate. The EAV is determined by the county assessor, assessor, the levy dollar amount, or the levy rate is determined by the taxing district. This proposed tax levy ordinance assumes the city may, before final property taxes are extended, levy the same rate as last year, which is a dollar thirty-five and a half cents per $100 of assessed value. If the rate stayed the same, the city portion of the property taxes for a home valued at $150,000 would be $596. The city portion is only fifteen percent of an average tax bill. The county assessor is still determining final property values, values, but certain unusual factors will affect the EAV for the City of Urbana this year. In particular, Carl Hospital is not paying property taxes, so their EAV is removed from the total EAV. Carl has a current assessed value of approximately $60 million, plus another $17 million of new construction, which would have come on the tax rolls this year, but will not. The total tax levy for $77 million of assessed value would have been approximately $1,043,000. This is the amount of property tax the city will not realize because of the Carl tax exemption. TIF III is expiring. This TIF has an assessed value of approximately $23 million, but 14 million of that is present, so likely only $9 million will be added as assessed value to the city's EAV. While the county assessor is still, excuse me, determining final values, is expected that growth in property values will be near zero this year. In 2012, the city collected just under $7.7 million in property taxes. In 2013, the city collected just under $6.9 million in property taxes, the $800,000 difference being the tax exemption for Carl Hospital. In the current FY 2013, 2014 budget, the city included a levy of $7.3 million, which is the basis for this proposed tax levy. Using $7.3 million as the levy dollar amount allows for room and setting the final rate once the final EAV for the city is known. Once the final EAV is known, the city may choose to adjust the final tax rate to maintain the current dollar thirty-five and a half cents before property taxes are extended in April of 2014. Between 2000 and 2010, the city was able to reduce the tax rate from a dollar fifty-four to a dollar twenty-nine. This saved the owner of a home valued at $150,000 over $1,320 in taxes over eleven years. The current tax rate of a dollar thirty-five and a half cents is in the middle range of rates compared to other central Illinois cities. And to put the rate in an additional perspective, a one-cent change in the rate from a dollar thirty-five and a half to a dollar thirty-six and a half, as an example, would mean an additional $4.40 on a home valued at $150,000. Those are all my comments, and I can, I can take questions now, if you may.
Dennis?
So the current tax rate that we're looking at, hopefully, is, is 1.355. But there was mention of 1.365, also in the, in the amounts, it was like the third bullet point down. Is that, is that a possible change? This is the second, third bullet point down on the second page. Is that a potential change? Are we evaluating what equals to $52,400 in property tax levy as a potential change rate? Am I reading this right? For every penny, yeah. Mayor?
May I, Mayor?
Yeah, that's what it would be if, if we didn't lower it.
If we didn't lower it.
Well, actually, no, you're just giving the example there, right, the one cent?
Yes.
Okay. But we would end up with a higher rate if, unless we- But we would end up with a higher rate unless we lower it in the spring. Because, but we normally have a higher levy than what we expect to get, because we don't know the assessed value at the first step in this process, and we adjust it once we find out what it is. But we've talked about keeping it the same as this year. That was in the discussion when we agreed to raise the sales tax.
Any further discussion? Charlie?
I'll just make a motion to sentence the council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Charlie, seconded by Diane, to forward ordinance number 2013-11-104, Annual Tax Levy Ordinance of the City of Urbana, Illinois, for the year beginning July 1st, 2013, and ending June 30, 2014, to advance that ordinance to council for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. There being no further business before the city council committee, the whole, this meeting is adjourned.